Good evening, everyone. I have 6:00 PM posted time and date of the meeting. So at this time, we call a meeting in order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir. We have a quorum.
Next item, I'll recognize our vice chair, who's going to lead us into pledge and give tonight's vacation.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you and for the beautiful day you've given us today. We thank you for this opportunity to be here to help run the county and make decisions. And we pray that you will give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. We pray that you will look over our EMS, fire, sheriff, and all of our military all over the world and keep your protective hand upon their lives. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next item, we'll recognize any elected officials present. Next item, we'll recognize any veterans present.
United States Navy.
Johnny, have it, yes, Tony.
Thank you all for your service.
I'll let him have one to be.
Next item, we'll recognize any law enforcement present. Thank you all. And next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Terry Bell, Assistant County Manager. Virginia, Health Guard. Rebecca Johnson, DSS. Allison Moon, Human Resources.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you have our proposed agenda, are there any items to be added to the agenda? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any questions? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, motion carries unanimous. Next item is public comment. Madam Clerk.
The citizen comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers shall be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speakers shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board and is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
I have three topics. The first two are regarding the minutes of the August 1st Commissioner meeting. I spoke twice, once during public comment, once during a public hearing. The minutes do not reflect at all what I said or the ideas that I was trying to provide to the board. One of them says, Robert A. Williams spoke about his dislike for the county's modified public comment policy. Eleven words. I'm a slow talker, but in three minutes, I can speak a whole lot more than 11 words. And the word dislike, I never used the word dislike. So the document is so wrong, I have to believe that it's just false and intentionally false. I was disappointed. I explained that I was disappointed in the new modified policy. It totally violates your number-one strategic goal, which is citizens' engagement, public engagement. The second item was during the public hearing. Says, Robert Williams spoke in opposition to Project Sunrise, stating he did not understand the contract terms and calculations that were presented. The calculations that I was talking about was the ones that I did. And they showed that Cleveland County didn't really sell the property. They paid somebody to take it, a million and a half dollars. Totally, totally false. I didn't say those things that you've got in here that's saying I said. But the main concern is about two weeks ago, I, in accordance with North Carolina law, a requirement that requires people, anybody, everybody, that has a suspicion of child abuse or child neglect to report it to the director of the depart- uh, Director of Social Services in the county in which the child resides. I filed a report, child neglect, a suspicion, more than a suspicion, a fact. About two weeks ago, I did that. I asked for a receipt, a notification back to acknowledge the receipt of that report. I copied it. All of you commissioners, the school board, Tim Moore.
Could you wrap it up?
Oh. Anyway, I'd like something to be done about it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda items before you consist of minutes, finance, departments, budget transfers, which are routine monthly business, as well as a series of grants received by the various departments. Unless the board wants to discuss a single item, I would recommend approval as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. That is included in your Commissioner packets. Are there any questions or discussion? If there's no discussion, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Make a motion that we approve as presented.
All those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Madam Clerk.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speakers shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allotted to another speaker.
All right. So before you all, we have Planning Case 23-18. This is a request to rezone property of 106 Drum Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use. At this time, I recognize Mr. Chris Martin.
Good evening, Board. Thank you, Chairman. We have from the planning office a request to change the zoning of 106 Drum Road. The petitioner is asking to change it from a residential zoning to neighborhood business conditional use for the purposes of constructing a telecommunications tower. Petitioner is the property owner, Paul and Darla Wyatt, and again, the property is at 106 Drum Road. You've got in your packet a site plan showing how that tower would be constructed or the placement of the tower on the property. Property is about three-quarters of an acre. It's parcel 4831. And it's located, again, Drum Road off of Joe's Lake Road in the south, southeast of Shelby, near Pinnacle School. This map shows the zoning. The white color shows the surrounding zoning as being residential. The yellow shows the surrounding zoning as restricted residential. An aerial photo shows the uses in that area. What you'll find is mostly single-family residential with a couple of businesses located near the property. And then the land use plan calls this area as our future secondary growth area and expecting more residential development in the future. And again, with the site plan that you've got in your packet, what you'll find is you'll see a plan for a tower, tower construction on the middle of this three-quarter of an acre lot. The tower is 195 feet tall. It's a self-supporting tower. And it has an engineered fall zone to fall and collapse within the boundaries of that property. We presented the case to the planning board and they recommended approval. They also noted that there would be some landscape screening required per Section 12-305 in our ordinance. It does require for some screening when you change the zoning to help buffer and provide a transition between the properties. And tonight, you'll hold a public hearing and the board can discuss and approve or deny the request. And being a conditional request, the board could apply any reasonable conditions to help the use be more compatible. And I can answer any questions.
Board, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions of Chris?
Would landscaping include any sort of fencing or?
Not, fencing's not required and it's not a part of the ordinance. It's more small tree and shrubbery that would be required.
Any other questions? All right, here and none. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. We have two that have signed up to speak. Mr. Williams.
Like I said at the last meeting when I spoke at a public hearing, you don't put out enough information to form an opinion or form a thought or anything about what's said. I don't have a clue from what we just said, what this is all about. But the only way to speak is to sign up in advance. So I signed up in advance. I have no feeling one way or another about this, but the process is what I don't agree with. From what I've heard, I don't see how any, from what I heard tonight, I don't see how any reasonable person could make a valid decision about anything. It has to be somewhere else that I'm not aware of or available to me. And I look, I don't see these things. So what can I say? I mean, it's just, it's just a bad thing. Back to your citizens' engagement.
Mr. Williams, you need to speak on this case or you can sit down.
I am speaking about this case.
No, you're not. You're speaking about the process. You can speak about this case.
This case has got a process and I'm speaking about it.
You can speak about this case or you can sit down.
Well.
The question is, are you for or against this rezoning?
I'm against the rezoning because the process is not appropriate.
Your time's up. Sit down.
My time is not up. I've got three minutes and twenty.
Sammy Black.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Sammy Black. I'm out of Boone, North Carolina, and I am here representing 1A Towers and the request for the rezoning of the property. To speak specifically to your question about the landscaping and the fencing, the lot is currently wooded with some native plants there on the property. It hasn't been cleared in some time. Portions have. But we are planning to build a 70 by 70 wooden fence around the structure of the base to hide it and then leave the native and natural landscaping around the structure, unless anything else is recommended by the board. This tower does have a budget for one of the carriers. The carriers are moving forward at this point. We've gone through our due diligence, developing the FAA, the FCC processes, the NEPA processes, and it's kind of a long, drawn-out process. It takes about a year to complete those. I've got the FAA approval currently out of all those. But this location has been picked. It triangulates between two towers to the north. It's about one and a half to 1.7 miles from each structure that exists. And with the reduction of the 3G on the cell tower sites throughout the nation and the improvement of the 5G, which is a quicker, faster service, and it does hold larger capacities for people and also give in-building coverage as well as road coverage and just outside air. This structure has been chosen as a location to move forward on due to the school being there and the large amount of residential development going on in the area. It is a 195 structure. We chose to go below the 200-foot marker to keep it from being lit. We chose an area that had some commercial. I believe there's a motorcycle shop kind of to the back and sort of a landscaping on the front. I believe that's zoned residential where the landscaping is. But the motorcycle, I believe, motorcycle business is, I'm assuming, that is neighborhood business. But that was the only location in that general vicinity I could find, kind of an out-of-the-way area without intruding on a lot of home sites right there. I did look at the neighboring property across the street. I was a little concerned at the amount of trailers and the wetlands and terrain I was going to deal with to develop a site. So that was my best option there in that location without moving too far to the south, which I did. Do have another location to the south, but it will not work for coverage at the school and that surrounding neighborhood.
Got any questions?
Question, with all the internet so forth, is that tower can be used for any wireless internet or is that proposed on that tower already?
Well, it will be part of the system for wireless internet as far as phone coverage goes. Now, as far as wireless internet for the county per se, that would not be on the structure currently. Now, we could talk to the county about adding some of their equipment. I've done it with 911 locations.
What you can't have talking about individual homes and how?
Well, it would be the individual homes. This is an in-building design to reach the school and the residential structures around it. So you would get home internet like a hotspot from your phone.
Through their carrier.
Through their carrier, yes, but not an internet connection like Comcast or someone else.
Okay. All right.
Just, just one question. It come up earlier. Would there be a fence? Is that something we need around all our towers? Is that something that a child could get to and hurt himself or something if we didn't have fences around our towers?
Well, to be honest, as a kid, I would have climbed one, but we do always put a fence around the structures and typically.
But that might be something we need to do every time.
Yes, sir.
But you normally do.
We always do. In this case, we went with the wooden fence because it's more of a residential area instead of a chain link. And you, we generally have those locked up with two or three locks depending on the carrier. And this structure has been designed for four carriers. And it's, it's been pinpointed, as you know, an important location for the school and 911 and the community as a whole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anyone else that did not have a chance to sign up would like to speak? All right, here and none, I'll now declare the public hearing closed. Chris, Commissioners, do you have any other questions of Chris before we take a vote? All right, here and none or see and none. So the question before us is either to approve, deny, or modify the proposed rezoning request. And this is again to request to rezone property at 106 Drum Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use for the use of a communication or cell tower.
I'll make a motion that we approve to the rezoning request.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Here and none. All those in favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, sir. Next item is a regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is the Cleveland County Digital Inclusion Plan. Mr. Alan Tony.
Good evening, Commissioners. First off, it's great to be here down in Cleveland County. Thanks for allowing me to speak on this agenda topic and this really important topic of broadband. My name is Alan Tony. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director at the Foothills Regional Commission, formerly as the Thermal Planet Development Commission. So I'm going to do a short presentation on this digital inclusion plan tonight. And what I'll say is anytime you have questions, just don't, feel free to interrupt anytime. Don't wait till the end. So kind of the first thing on this is, number one, where did this plan come about and what is digital inclusion? So North Carolina State University through the Institute for Emerging Issues has a goal for every single county within North Carolina to have a digital inclusion plan. I think it's first to understand what is digital inclusion. So it's access to high-speed, reliable broadband, it's affordable internet and user devices, it's access to internet-enabled devices, and finally, it's having the skill set and the ability to actually navigate the internet, you know, not fall for scams, get on telehealth, do training, do education, that kind of own component combined in together. So why do you need a digital inclusion plan? Of course, this is a priority for the state, but why should you need one? Well, number one, I think we need to understand what's the broadband needs in our community. So using the North Carolina Broadband Survey as well as our steering committee, which Commissioner Bridges was a part of and provided a lot of great insight and input to understand what is the community's current status in broadband. This can also help provide some information about future grant funding opportunities, what grant funding opportunities are the best fit, the best way to kind of fund this expansion or other kinds of things outside of just broadband availability and access. So, and this sets clear attainable goals for broadband access, affordability, skill sets, and device access. And finally, this kind of sets that key projects for, you know, Cleveland County, but not only you guys, but the schools, the municipalities here within, nonprofits, internet service providers. It sets clear goals for what the community would like to see. So through this process, we had to create a vision statement and a mission statement. And the steering committee really worked together to create that vision statement and that mission statement. And that's a connect to Cleveland County, where broadband is available for all citizens. And then the mission statement is to improve digital literacy and expand access to reliable, affordable, high-speed broadband in Cleveland County through advocacy, collaboration, and education. So that's kind of the ethos of the plan. So the asset needs an inventory. So we really dived into the data to understand what is the current broadband assets and needs here within Cleveland County. So we looked at a lot of, since this data, we looked at those terrible FCC maps that we're all aware of. We looked at the North Carolina Broadband Survey and what the public was saying. But we also heard from, you know, folks like Commissioner Bridges, folks like, you know, Kerry Mountain. We had Mayor Willis from Bellwood involved. We had a really great group of steering committee members from all over the county, including all three major municipalities, the library system, the school system, the community college, Gardner Web, to hear what they're seeing. So one thing we found is that you have nine internet service providers and it's really broke up between fiber, cable, satellite, and wireless. And then one still is providing DSL. It's kind of on its way out, hopefully. And then according to the broadband survey, this is one thing, and this is a little self-selecting is what I'll say, because the people who are really adamant about broadband, well, they don't have broadband, so they're going to take that survey. But one thing we found is 40% of Cleveland County residents have access to broadband on the survey. I don't think that's accurate or true, but that was who was taking the survey and was really adamant about it. And to prove that point, 70% of Cleveland County residents subscribe to broadband. Now, or subscribe to internet. It's important to note that broadband means something very specific. In this case, it means 25 down and three up. So just because you subscribe to internet doesn't necessarily mean you have access to broadband. Does that make sense? So, and then one thing we also saw is most Cleveland County residents pay over $125 per month for broadband. That's pretty steep. And about a quarter, quarter of all households are enrolled in the Affordable Connectivity Program. So that's the program to, that the federal government created during COVID to reduce the cost of, cost of internet and broadband on low, moderate-income homes. Any questions so far? So I'm going to get right into the meat of this with goals and objectives. So this one here is about improving, increasing broadband connectivity throughout Cleveland County. And the goal is to ensure that all residents, if they so choose, have access to reliable, high-speed broadband. That's the federal government's priority. That's the state's priority. I know that's our legislature's priority and we want it to be our priorities here locally. And I know it's the COGS priority as well because that's what we hear from our council government members. So, and this is about affordability. So we want to make sure that the broadband, not only is the broadband available, but the broadband is affordable. And I'll give you an example of this. We were working with Rutherford County on their plan. And one thing we were hearing is, and this is in the middle of Forest City, where you would think, hey, they have pretty good broadband assets. It's available. One thing we were seeing is you had this entire neighborhood who wasn't enrolled in broadband at all. And what we found was it was a low-income community and broadband out front was very, very expensive. And I can't remember the dollar amount on top of my head. It was very expensive. So trying to figure out how to create some competition within that broadband sphere to help create downward price pressures is really important going forward. And this is about tech, device access. So one thing we see is most people have one of these. You know, they have a cellphone. They have a smartphone in their pocket, but they don't necessarily have access to a computer or a tablet or something similar. And for, for folks who maybe are going through school, maybe seniors who are wanting access telehealth, you know, maybe, you know, working person who wants to apply for jobs, they don't necessarily have the same device access, you know, universally. Now, the Cleveland County Library and the schools and the community colleges all do a great job providing that service. And that's one thing we heard is the service is there, but people don't necessarily know about it. You know, it's kind of interesting. And then this is about programming. So this is to develop programming that supports our digital literacy needs within our county. So one of the key things there is we heard in the steering committee is, I think we can all agree that the scam emails and the scam calls have gotten worse than ever before in preparing folks to know what's a scam, what's legitimate. Is this person actually calling me about my health insurance or my car insurance or, you know, something similar? It's a really key component here and that's, you know, and that's so important. One of the other things here is telehealth. I keep bringing up telehealth because it really is a way for us in rural communities to access healthcare that we normally wouldn't have access to. And that's, that's one of those things, making sure, especially our senior populations, understands, hey, here's what telehealth is. Here's how you can access it and here's what it can do for you. So I thought it was relevant to kind of talk about the steering committee and CAGO and who we really had to buy into this plan. So Cleveland County was well-represented in this plan. Cleveland County Schools, Kings Mountain, Shelby, Bullin Springs, Gardner Web, Polkville, Bellwood, the community college. We had, the former mayor of Earl was involved. So we had a really great steering committee from folks geographically dispersed throughout the county with a lot of different insight and input. We also went to CAGO and I know I saw three of you guys at CAGO and we had a great time. It was a great event. I went back to my father's commission in Rutherford County. I said, man, CAGO is a great event. It brings everybody together. It talks about things going on in our community. It's a really good thing. So kudos to you guys for that. But Fauston, Waco, Bellwood, Kizer, Polkville. Waco, Bellwood, Kazer, Polkville, Latimore, Grover, Kingstown, even the school system was taking our resolutions to go back and pass and say, hey, we support this, this is a good thing, this is a priority to us, we believe in this, so it was a real, it was a really great thing. And this is just kind of continuing the work, because this is really, what I would say is this is really a first step, this isn't going to magically fix our broadband issues, just because you pass this plan, you're not going to stop getting phone calls from citizens about how they don't have internet at their house, but this does give us an idea of the direction to move forward in, and how we can move forward together, you know, as a region, because we can get a lot more accomplished together than we can separately, to really address our broadband needs here, and that's it for me, do y'all have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Other weekend, we were at a convention in Raleigh, and I was talking to the AT&amp;T rep, who, when he on with me, anyway.
Yes, sir.
And they were talking about broadband, she carried.
Okay, now, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, anyway, I was in Raleigh, and I would talk to the AT&amp;T rep.
Yes, sir.
And specifically ask him about broadband speed and so forth.
Yes, sir.
And he was telling me that they've got systems that they can do wireless and provide broadband.
Yes.
Not high-speed, and every time I hear you say something, he said, high-speed, high-speed, high-speed.
Yes.
But according to the school system, they don't have to have high-speed, they just need to have a connection where they can get the schoolwork done.
Right.
So each time that things come up, it's always high-speed, high-speed.
Yeah.
You go high-speed, you got to go wire, and my question is, why aren't we looking at some of these devices of wireless that can be put out in the rural areas where the families can have at least internet service and be able to communicate.
Right.
And do the things like for the kids in school, or whatever, but like I say, each time that anyone talks about it, they talk about the high-speed, but AT&amp;T said they can provide the service, and it's not as fast as high-speed, but it can do the same capability, and they can do it reasonably.
I think an ISP kind of got a hold of your ear there for a second and told you a little bit of what you wanted to hear, first of all, I think, second of all, I think with that, what we're talking about with high-speed is not, twenty-five down and three up is really not that quick, and I would say, you know, go to some, there's folks in northern Cleveland County right now, we had folks on our committee who used the hotspot from, I think T-Mobile is a pretty popular one in northern Cleveland County for that, and one thing we consistently hear is the consistency of the service, because we know about towers being overloaded, or transition, or weather, or something similar, so consistency of service, but also the cost, you know, that's a pretty, you know, that's a pretty good cost to our citizens, and I think if we can figure out a way to provide a more consistent service, whether it's through, you know, funds like BEAD program to where it's minimizing the cost to our, to our local governments to provide that better service, I think it's a win in the long run, and I know, know, it is the state's goal, and it is legislature's goal for that wired connection to be there, I think the wireless connection is great, my parents are on a wireless connection, because they do not have that high-speed access point, but I do think there is some issues with cost with that, as well as consistency of service, and I do think you see that, if you talk to the folks who have that, they will tell you.
Well, according to what, according to what he was telling me, the cost trade-off is about the same with wireless, but he said when you go with the wire, it gets more expensive, especially when you got those one or two houses out there on that one single road.
Yes, sir, it's more expensive for them to build out.
Even though we got a goal, wouldn't it be better if we could provide some service to the resident rather than keep saying, hey, we're going to get high-speed, going to get high-speed, and they got nothing.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, it's better than nothing, that wireless hotspot is better than nothing, however, our long-term goal shouldn't be for those two folks on that road, who maybe, maybe they live far off the road to have to rely on that wireless hotspot, our goal long-term should be for that wireline internet connection.
That wireless hotspot is probably pretty much available to everybody now.
Uh, not really, no, it's pretty inconsistent throughout the county, and I'm, it's kind of ironic, we had the tower folks here before me, but you do have that connection, but it's pretty inconsistent throughout the county, one thing we heard too, that throughout our process is that connection's inconsistent based upon the time of day, so when everybody's home from work at six o'clock, your connection's really, really inconsistent, so you have a harder time getting on or not getting on, and the reason for that, that is because there's a limited amount of bandwidth available, and when you get onto that bandwidth, let's say there's a neighborhood of a hundred people, and a hundred of those people have those wireless hotspots, there's only so much bandwidth being provided in that region, so when that hundred people get on, they have to kind of slow that speed down, with fiber, you don't have that issue, you're going to have, let's say it's everybody in that neighborhood is on fiber, they're all going to have twenty-five down and three up, doesn't matter how many people are on, so that's one of those issues we run into, and there is, there is a lot of dead spots within the county, one thing about western North Carolina is we have a lot of hills and hollers, and that makes those kind of line-of-sight connections very inconsistent, unstable at times, so it's just one of those things that we're trying to navigate.
Couldn't we add more line-of-sights to it, what I'm saying is, I understand what you're saying, have a goal, but right now, if we don't have anything, they ain't worried about the speed.
Yeah, no, I agree.
What I'm saying is, no one's talking about trying to get them something right now, each time that I hear a survey that you talk, our goal is high-speed, our goal is high-speed, there's nothing said about, we're going to try to get you something.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, and I think we should take what we like to call incremental steps forward to address those folks' needs and concerns, I completely agree with you. Yes, ma'am.
You said long-term.
Yes.
Can you define what long-term might be?
Subject to state and federal funding and granting requirements, I know that's a cop-out answer, but what I'll say is, I'll give you an example, I know right now we're going through ARDOF and some of those other grant funding, since so much of that is regulated at the state and federal level, that they don't have to have their infrastructure in till twenty-six, so it's phased in percentage of years, I'm about to get real in the weeds with you, so, but, so let's use Charter Spectrum as an example, so if they have all these different ARDOF or RACE grants throughout the, throughout the country, they only have to complete a certain percentage in each year, and then, at that point in time, the federal government says, yep, this is good, you've completed twenty-five percent, well, y'all don't care if, or I don't care either, if someone in Nevada got their RACE grant built out, we want it built right here, right now, right, you know, we want it built yesterday, so one thing we actually are working on is to try to figure, we're working with the North Carolina Rural Center, who's been very successful in the eastern part of the state, to try to kind of hold these folks accountable for getting these program, these, this infrastructure deployed in a reasonable timeframe, we just started that in the last month or so, so trying to figure out a reasonable timeframe, you know, I think, I think the goal is like twenty-six, twenty-eight, and I know that's far off, and I know that's not, doesn't help anybody now, but that's, what I'll say is, the wheels of government move slow, especially at the federal level, but they, but they move.
I get a call about every two months from the same gentleman, and, you know, he doesn't have internet, his sister did bite the bullet and get Starlink, but, you know.
Yeah, and that's, and Starlink's been very effective for getting folks the broadband service they need, because it is that, that speed that we're looking for, uses a little bit more advanced technology with low orbiting satellites.
But you have to have funds to do it.
It's, it's expensive, my, I have an uncle who did it, and it's, well, actually, no, my, my parents did, and he did too, and it's six or eight hundred dollars for just to buy the equipment straight out, and that's, that's cost prohibitive for a lot of folks.
What's the monthly fee for something for that?
It's like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
So it's more than broadband.
Yeah, it is, it is, I know I pay, I think that, I know what I pay for broadband, I think they pay twice what I pay for Starlink, it's pretty, it's pretty.
If you're talking about Starlight, you check with AT&amp;T, because the guy assured me that their system wasn't any higher than what it would be if you had fiber optic cable.
Yeah, I.
So if we check with AT&amp;T to see what their prices are.
There's in the plan, there's all the prices, and I don't have them on top of my head, but it's similar, I think it's still a little bit more expensive, because there's an equipment fee on top of that, but it's, it's not dissimilar, yeah? Any other questions?
You know, he's talking about what AT&amp;T can do, is AT&amp;T offering that to these folks in our county?
See, I don't know, I don't know if that's in.
Are they trying to market it? I mean, they can say they can do it, but they won't.
I understand, I understand they're trying to, I understand they're trying to market it, but I think there's some holdup who can do and what can do and how many can do in the county.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about.
Yeah, I think.
Who can and who can't.
Yeah, one thing we're consistently seeing is T-Mobile here in Cleveland County is really kind of the go-to for those wireless hotspots, so one thing we're consistently hearing, they seem to have the best coverage and the best availability. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I think one thing we've experienced the last, pre-COVID on broadband is that ISPs say a lot of things, and then when we go and kind of assess those things, there's something missing there, I'm trying to be very charitable in my words, there's something missing there, that's, that's not going to change anytime soon, we're going to continue fighting that fight.
In other words, a lot of people are standing in line for those federal and state funds, but we've got to get somebody to put cable in the ground.
Yeah, we do, and that's, you know, that's one thing we need to, we need, this is kind of that first step to figure out that strategy of who, who should we partner with, who should we work with, and one thing we consistently heard through this process is that towns and counties do not necessarily have the time or capacity to really work on broadband, it's kind of specialized, you have an internet service provider come in, he speaks a foreign language, it feels like, when they start really getting in the weeds of broadband, and we don't really know, so one thing we did at foothills with some of our grant funding money is we've actually hired, and he's with me tonight, and he won't be too embarrassed, but Jack Elliott here, and he is a dedicated broadband employee, so his work is going to be solely in broadband, a couple other things too, but his major priority is broadband, and working on getting that cable in the ground and figuring out the partnerships and how to move forward, so.
Have you tried to work with a partnership of combinations of two, the cable in the ground and wireless?
We have, yeah, that's a, that's a serious, that's a, one of the considerations.
Where we at there?
Yeah, I knew Starlink was awarded some ARDOF money, but.
I know Starlink, but they're, they're pretty high, like you said.
They are high.
I talked to your dad the other day, and he wasn't satisfied with it.
No, he's not, what I'll say is that I, I think that's a good priority to move the needle along, but the state's priority long-term is.
I'm talking about what do we need in the county, I know what the state's goals are long-term.
Yeah.
What I'm asking.
We need a combination of the two.
Are there something or somebody else that we could partner with to bring a combination of the two in?
Yes.
And get it done quicker, and then do cable.
Yes, I would say, you know, we should most certainly look at partnerships with groups like T-Mobile to figure out what that looks like, one hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, what we're talking about now is a proposal to go to the future, right?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
All right, does this affect what we've already got started, because I know that we got Charter, which is Spectrum, already out there putting in lines.
Yes, sir.
This has nothing to do with that, so what's already started is already, is already going.
Yep.
It's going to continue to go.
And going to continue to go, yeah, this isn't going to change anything with respect to that, Commissioner, it's just going to say, what should we be thinking about long-term?
For the next, for the next phase.
Yeah, ten, twenty years, you know, that kind of thing.
So, so whatever is going on with this, trying to decide where we're going.
Yeah.
Is, is for the future, because we've already got things moving on now.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, that we're, we're not just now starting this process.
Yes, sir, yeah.
This is something that we've already had going for a while.
Yes, yeah, this is just building off.
This is going to add on to it.
Yep, this is building off what y'all have already done and accomplished, we're not big believers in reinventing the wheel, you know, let's build off things we're doing, let's look at what we're doing right and continue to build off of it, yeah, yeah, and it's hard too, when you, when we do long-range planning, and Chris can talk about this in detail too, I'm sure, because we think so far out at times, that a lot of times it's, well, we need it now, well, I, I agree, I understand that very, very well, but we also have to think, we can do, we can do both, to, you know, think here and now, and let's think ten, twenty years from now, what kind of county do we want our kids to grow up in, and our, our grandkids?
Any other questions? Our second item before us is to approve or deny the motion, or approve or deny the digital inclusion plan that Mr. Tony has presented.
I would like to make a motion that we approve.
I'll second. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before I approve it, I would like to see something in your plan that you would do a study with a joint venture to see with the cable and the wireless, you hadn't said anything about the wireless in your plan.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, so we've actually just got the agreement today with Connect Humanity and Appalachian Regional Commission to determine the key next steps for broadband access in the county, so if that's a priority for this board, that'd be a priority for us for Cleveland County.
So you're adding that to your plan?
No, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we need to add it to the plan, I think it's, I think it's a different, I think it's a different topic to address through a different, a different source, because I don't think the long-term goal should be wireless hotspots. Yeah.
You're not even showing the short-term plan yet.
Yeah, I, I think what we're looking at is what is the, once again, a long-term plan with long-term goals in mind.
Do you have any other questions? So we have a motion and a second, correct? We have a motion and a second to approve the digital inclusion plan, all this very will say aye. Anyone opposed?
The reason I voted no, because he hadn't showed me a short-term plan, short-term plan to go along with a long-term.
Well, is, is what we've got, what we got in the works now with the grants that we already have, that's our short-term plan.
He hadn't showed us anything about the short-term, all he's talking about is long.
I think that's what he's been commissioned to do, is come up with a long-term plan to take over when our short-term plan gets all built out.
Yeah, we already have.
We don't, we don't have a short-term plan, so.
Well, we do, we've been, we've been partnering with other.
Hadn't been very successfully, has it?
Well, we, we, I think we've.
We're working on it, they're, they're out working on it.
They're, they're out working on it, but see, that's why we, to, to get to everybody in the county, we have to have a long-term plan, it's not going to be tomorrow when we get to the top of Ben's knob up in Kazer, you know, it's.
Let's go take a look.
Long-term.
Yes, sir, yeah, if y'all have anything else, staff has my contact information, reach out to me anytime, thanks for having me tonight, and thank you for your time to see me, thank you.
Thank you for all you do, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the opioid litigation update, Ms. Hanson.
Good evening, board, and thank you for having me, really, tonight, I'm just going to give an update on our opioid settlement dollars and kind of where we are, and hopes to kind of continue our work moving forward. So our journey to date, y'all signed our memorandum of understanding of, last year, then we began really gathering our local data, provider data, hospital data, all the resources available in the county, trying to get a broad picture and kind of understanding of what we had available locally, then we started meeting with local providers, again, trying to get a better understanding of what are they seeing, what kind of patients are they serving, where are our gaps, kind of what can we do better, we developed a number of trends that were identified by our local providers, and then we also held a public meeting, really to talk through those trends, and then get additional insight from stakeholders around, are these similar trends, are there different things that might we be able to fill these gaps with, and what is that additional strategy and community input, then we really overlapped both of those meetings and trends and data sets to present some aligned strategies tonight. So a little bit of background, you all signed the memorandum of agreement for the opioid settlement dollars along with all one hundred North Carolina counties, it gave about seven hundred fifty-seven million dollars to the state of North Carolina, we're set to get just a little over seven million over eighteen years, which equates to about three hundred and twenty thousand annually, we get a lot of upfront dollars first, but then annually as it kind of siphons out, you see it averages about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A few requirements as part of the MOA for these particular dollars, they're put in a special revenue account, they're subject to special finance and compliance auditing, in order to utilize these funds, we have to come before the board and present either a special budget or a resolution in order to spend those dollars, as well as every year, we come before the board and present what's called an annual impact report, and so whatever strategies are identified and voted on, then you all get to see the results of those strategies and vote to continue to fund or change our strategic plan. So the memorandum of, of understanding or agreement actually outlines a number of options that we can go with, and so we can go with option A types of strategies, so these are high-abatement strategies, high-level pieces that have a lot of impact upfront, or we can do option B strategies, and really, the only difference between the two is option B requires some very intentional strategic planning, and these are a little bit. strategic planning, and these are a little bit more granular strategies. So as I mentioned, we took a deep dive, and I know this is really tiny font, but it's really meant to depict the resources in the county, and so these are actually three pages of local Cleveland County mental health and behavioral health resources. And so this is kind of what we started with as a baseline and a foundation in order to start bringing those provider groups together. And so we were able to get a number of these providers together on that box on the left there, and really what we discovered, this matrix on the right depicts, that it's very confusing. It's hard to navigate, you can enter into the system in any different part in this pathway, and as you can see, the lines are all intertwined in different colors, because those all signify kind of how you got connected, or where you got connected, or maybe who your point person was, and where you could go next. And so really what this told us is, it's complicated, and it's hard to navigate, and it's challenging for people, and it's challenging for our community. And so we heard many of these similar things, not only from this provider group, but also from our community input meetings, that it's hard, and that we don't know the resources available, and we don't know how to get to them, and depending on where we enter the system, the availability is limited. And so after we aligned all those trends and strategies, we really came up with four common strategies that came from all of those groups and collective data. So the first being community care navigation or case management, the second being provider education, third being community education, specifically around some Narcan availability, among some other things, and then fourth being workforce development. So diving a little bit into more of what this entails. So the first piece, community care navigator or case management, really, as I described before, the process for getting connected to care is challenging. It's very complicated, folks can't get connected, community members can't get connected, agencies can't, and so the concept around community navigation is having a point of contact locally that knows the resources, understands the system, knows how to connect people and where they need to go, not only from a patient perspective, but also community partner perspective. And so the idea around this concept is to have a designated individual or multiple individuals that serve really as that point of contact, that number that you can call, that you can lean on to get connected to services. And then, as well as a component around marketing that, because we want the community to know, what is that phone number, and who do I call, and how do I get connected? And then really, for this first year as we're measuring, we're really going to measure a number of people getting connected to services. So we want to know, once we launch this, how many people are utilizing the service, and are they finding it to be successful, and are they engaging in it? The second prong to this strategy is community education, and so I think a lot of people know about the opioid dollars and opioid epidemic, and really just broadening that more around kind of what does that mean, and what can I do as an individual in the community, as well as, we provide naloxone right now at the health department for community dispensing, and so making that more relevant to people and raising awareness around that is another resource for the community to lean on. We're going to do some yard signs specifically around, you know, education, Narcan availability, the availability of this care manager, as well as a public service announcement video that we can share, you know, maybe at the theaters or on local TV, C-19 and things like that, that really also outlines kind of what is opioid epidemic, and kind of what can we do, or what can I do as an individual if I am exposed to this or see this in the community? And then for this one, our measurement here at this point is going to be number of Narcan units dispensed, since our marketing is largely going to be driven around the availability of naloxone and making sure that we can connect the community if they need it. The third prong is provider education and training, and so this is really kind of two-faceted. The first is partnering with AHEC to provide two 90-minute trainings annually to our local physicians, dentists, really any of our providers that would prescribe opioids to patients, to really get a broader perspective on how they're using them, when they're using them, and then ultimately, the long-term goal here would be to reduce prescriptions when they're unnecessary, or the timeframe in which they're prescribing. The other piece that came out here that we really want to spend a little bit more time exploring is our crisis center. So we know that we have a gem here in the county that has a lot of capacity, and one thing we heard from providers is, they don't quite understand how to use it. And so as part of this particular strategy, we're going to spend some more time with Phoenix in understanding the crisis center a little bit better, so we can also incorporate a provider education piece that's really tailored to understanding how the crisis center works, and how providers can best utilize it, and how they screen in and out of that service. Measurement for this particular metric is going to be based on attendance and evaluation, and as I mentioned, the long-term goal really is to reduce opioid prescribing. And then the fourth, which I know we've heard lots of times here, but I think it's also relevant for this, and we heard it from our provider groups as well as our community members, is, we have a number of mental health and behavioral health professionals in the community, and they can only see a certain number of people based on their licensure, or certain types of people based on their licensure, but the provider groups believe, if offered the opportunity, like the stipend, to expand licensure, they would seek that, and then ultimately could see maybe a broader range of patients and increase our availability. And so this is a workforce expansion slash development proposal based on really providing up to $2,500 reimbursement-based to current practicing mental health or behavioral prac, or behavioral health professionals in the community, where they could go and expand some of their licensure, as you see there, licensed clinical addiction specialist, or some of these additional things to be able to, one, expand their knowledge, expand the capacity of our workforce in Cleveland County, and then ultimately serve more patients. And really, our measurement for success here will be based on number of people that successfully complete those trainings. And this slide is really a synopsis of all of the four prongs that I just talked through. This is ultimately the authorizing resolution that I'm hoping to request tonight. It tells you the four strategies, as I mentioned, the community navigator, community education, provider education, and workforce expansion. The budget amounts requested for each one of those, the performance measurements, as I mentioned, to make sure that we're really measuring pieces of success, so we know that we're either doing this well or we're not. The MOA option that this fits in, so these are all aligned with option A. Our timeline is annually, so I will come before you each year, because as I mentioned in the earlier slides, one of the pieces of this particular MOA is our annual impact report. And so as the resolution is currently written, it will run September through August 31st, and then I'll be back before you to present the annual impact report, which will have all of these strategies if approved tonight. And so my request for the board is approve or deny. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you for the update. Board, do you have any questions?
Under community education, is, is there going to be opportunity for family members of people that have problems to come and get educated how to use the Narcan?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. I think with community education, we didn't, I really didn't define it on this slide, but really, we want to cast that net big and wide. So for anybody who wants to come and participate and get a little broader understanding, understanding naloxone, and all of those things, absolutely.
Anybody else? So if there's no other questions or comments, let's tie up, seek a motion to approve or deny Tiffany's request.
I'll, I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just think it's something that we really need, and I know people who have these problems, and, and even though there's 16 to 18 organizations in our county that handle these types of problems, they don't know where to turn, which one to go to, and I think that's going to go a long way to handle that.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Tiffany. I think you actually have the next item as well, so this is environmental health fees.
I'm trying, Tiffany, you got something up here.
No, that's okay. I was going to start clicking.
Don't start clicking.
Yes. So before you tonight is a request for a fee change for our environmental fee policy. And a little bit of background about this is General Assembly actually earlier this year passed a new session law related to some privatized kind of permit options that we have, which include our engineer option, our authorized onsite wastewater evaluator, as well as our A2 permits. And so this request is really to align with the updated session law. The current approved fees for these are $450 for our improvement permits and construction authorizations, which are where kind of those A2s fall in, and then our engineer option permits are $135 currently. But as session law really dictates, these would be changed to these new proposed fees, which the engineer option permit would be $35, the authorized onsite wastewater evaluator would be $35, and that A2 permit would be $180. For us, we've evaluated the amount of these permits that we do each year, and we do about 40 on average, so impact on our revenue or anything like that would be fairly limited because it's a small volume. And the action before the board is to approve or disapprove, but I also have Nathan McNeely with me, our environmental health director, if y'all have any specific questions as well.
All right. Board, do we have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but one thing I'd like to say is that, working with all the contractors, being one of them, we, in the past, we've had trouble getting specialized permits. So I know it looks like that the county is making less money, so the first thought was, well, the contractor's getting out cheap.
Sure.
But they're not. They have to pay those other fees, and those are not negligible. They are usually huge.
Right.
So I think it's great that we can provide landowners that have land that won't take a regular system. With this, with this proposal, we'll be able to help those landowners utilize the use of their land.
Right. Yeah, I think these private options offer another option for construction development as well as landowners, yes.
And because of that, I'll vote, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? I hear none. All those favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you, Tiffany. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, Board, we have two sets of board appointments. Madam Clerk, the first one is the Cleveland County Historical Preservation Committee.
Yes, Commissioners, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this point, you'll need to appoint two people, one for a county seat and the other